I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the place.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to the December 8th meeting. Mr. Potter is going to be running just a little bit late, but he'll be here at some point. Okay, the minutes of December 1st. We have a motion to approve the minutes of December 1st.
So.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor.
Aye.
We approved the financial report at the last meeting and we don't have a report for this meeting. We'll have one for the January meeting. So up, up next is Chris Sheen, Managing Director of Mesera. Is that right?
Mesero.
Mesero. Mesero. Mesero. I went with the me instead of the mes. Mesero Financial. So come on down Chris and we really appreciate you coming in. We invited you to talk a little bit about the try to do your best, explain the tax incremental financing tip. And I know I had certainly had a lot of questions. I've spoke a couple of times now with Chris and I know that the, there's some ideas that I have for our long-term capital improvement projects that maybe we could benefit by having a TIF area. So Chris, can I just like leave it to you and make a presentation and then we'll ask you some questions?
Absolutely, absolutely. I just want to first and foremost thank everyone for the opportunity to have me here. I appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to speaking a little bit more about this economic development tool. By way of background, I'm a Managing Director with Mesero Financial. I've been doing this form of financing for the last 20 years. I've been involved in the majority of almost every TIF financing in the state of Maryland, including inaugurating the first TIF financing in Howard County as well as in Arundel County. And have worked with Baltimore City certainly on many of their TIF financings, most recently the $160 million Port Covington project which was, which closed successfully last year, just before the year end. That to date was the largest TIF done in everyone's recent memory for a pre-development, from a pre-development standpoint. And that, I think if anyone's been downtown, you've certainly seen the cranes and the concrete and the buildings going up. So that has been, you know, the largest to date and that was for, you know, one of the core projects in the city of Baltimore. But just taking a step back, I thought I put together some detailed information. I've gone kind of into some extensive components, but I thought it might be helpful just to take a step back and just talk about what tax increment financing is. So TIF, as I've heard some people say, stands for Tax Increment Financing. It's a form of economic development finance that has been in place now for almost 60 years. It was first pioneered out on the West Coast and is now certainly being deployed, you know, throughout the country as well as on the East Coast with great regularity. It is a, one of the stronger tools in the economic development toolbox of a local municipality. It allows for the future growth, it allows for a town to or municipality to leverage future growth to address current capital or project or infrastructure needs. Typically, you tend to see it deployed more regularly with certain types of cataclysmic economic development projects that are a core focus of an area, for example, of Baltimore with Port Covington. They believe that to be a critical project for, for the city and as such, they granted a $700 million TIF. That is abnormal and unusual. Normally there, those are not projects of that size, but it really is a quiver in the toolbox of economic development and municipal officials and is one that can be very powerful when deployed. You know, typically it is used to help finance infrastructure and public improvements upfront. And what does that mean? That means it allows you to, you know, finance water, sewer, roads, resiliency infrastructure, stormwater, anything that is going to be owned, operated and maintained by the public body. If we're talking about doing it on a tax exempt basis, which is typically how these are done. Tax exempt is the lowest and cheapest form of financing out there. Hence why, you know, typically you'll see municipalities tend to leverage this. It is not a tax by any means on the broader public. You're simply relying on future development to create the revenue stream necessary to repay the bonds that are issued. It is a self-financing mechanism, which I can't emphasize enough. The reliance and the structuring of this, you know, is contingent on the future growth occurring so that it creates the values in which in turn create the tax revenues necessary to repay the bonds. What is the purpose of TIF? You know, it was initially created as a tool to remediate blight in the cities and has since been expanded to address all types of broader infrastructure projects. Every state obviously defines their own, their own form of blight and has a very broad term, but typically when thinking about tax increment financing in terms of demonstrating a need is, is the blood floor test. You know, blood floor, this investment, this project, this infrastructure cannot get completed and delivered in time. It's obviously, its purpose is to encourage development and support, you know, the broader community with, with certain projects that are critical to the overall success and future economic development needs of a town or municipality. I can just take a quick pause if there's any questions or keep diving in.
I'm rolling pretty good right now. Anyone have any questions on this side? This side? At this point?
You made one statement about the future development or growth to make this work. Is there a determining factor or flow need to determine exactly if that growth is continuing to accomplish this goal?
That's a great question. So when, when, you know, what's assumed there's been a district created and you're now at the, at the point where you're thinking about creating a financing. At that point, there would be a demonstrated revenue study that would look at all of the future plan development and they would generate, he or she or the firm would generate a revenue study that would qualify that the revenues projected are, you know, are reasonable and planned so that when we sell a bond, we're doing so under the basis that it's going to be obviously a successful project and there's not going to be an instance where there's going to be a failure for the bond investor to receive its payment with respect to the debt that's outstanding.
Thank you. Good answer.
You know, one of, I think what's important is certain items that can be financed on a tax exempt basis when looking to do a tax increment financing. It's relatively broad and encompasses public roads, landscaping, parks, recreational facilities, water, sewer, flood facilities, resiliency, environmental remediation, public parking, that's another one where it's been commonly deployed. Montgomery County, Howard County have used both of their TIFs to help finance, as Baltimore County as well. And if anyone's familiar, Knowings Mills, the parking garage there was financed primarily by a TIF bond that was issued by Medco. So parking is a relatively common function, given parking is expensive to build and expensive to maintain and no one likes to pay for parking. So if you can find another way to do it and deliver it open to the public, this has been a successful way that it's been deployed within the state of Maryland.
Chris, where do your investors or your buyers of bonds typically come from?
Great question. In Maryland, we're, we're unique in that we have such a number of large financial services firms who actually have high-yield bond funds. And these, these types of bonds almost are always bought by institutional investors and they're part of a high-yield portfolio. So in the state of Maryland, TRO is a gigantic buyer. They snap up anything and everything they can get their hands on, assuming it is a well-structured bond. TRO Price, Round Advisory, those are three of the local firms, but then thinking broader, Vanguard, BlackRock, Goldman, Capital Research amongst others, Alliance Bernstein. So it's about 20 to 30 high-yield, predominantly high-yield investors who are looking to fill a certain quota in their bond portfolio of high-yield insurance.
Thank you.
Typically, there are, there's two types of TIF, of TIF models that are deployed. One and more commonly used is the project-based model whereby you're looking at doing tax increment financing to finance, you know, infrastructure improvements specific to that project within the district. The other type is an area-wide TIF whereby you're creating a large district around some or all of a county, a town, and you're relying on the future overall development within the overall community to create the revenue stream necessary to repay the debt. In Prince George's County, we essentially TIFed 5% of the county. It was about 15,000 acres and we issued bonds that allowed the redevelopment authority to acquire about approximately 10 blocks of blighted properties, which they've since redeveloped and turned over to a master developer for future redevelopment. That is, was one of the kind of the core focus needs of the prior county executive and this was a smashing success for, for Prince George's County is it allowed them to acquire area that had been severely blighted, run down in an area that they had designated as core growth for them. It's in the Sutland Naylor area, which is relatively close to all of the federal, federal agencies that are there along the metro stations and they wanted to address this, this particular blight and they've been very successful in doing so.
Chris, if we designate, if we were to move forward, we were to designate a specific, a specific area for the, the total town, but let's say, you know, I'm looking at total town as a TIF, but if we did a specific area that we know is going to be growing, can those TIF dollars be used for improvements outside the TIF district?
Fortunately, that is correct. So it's, so in the state of Maryland, it does allow you to finance improvements outside of the TIF district. That is not something that is done in every state and so you're fortunate you have the ability to do that. Okay.
You had mentioned, one of the TIF projects being a quote-unquote parcel, had the municipality acquired that through eminent domain or how was it?
They purchased it outright. So they approached, they had begun dialogue with some of the owners before we even completed on the process. They completed appraisals and they came to terms, you know, indicative terms, as you might say, contingent obviously on proceeds being available when they were available. So once we closed on the bonds, the revenue authority for Prince George's County then acquired the property, purchased it directly, fee simple, from the owners and then transferred that to the redevelopment authority of Prince George's County.
Did they, for lack of a better term, get held up by the sellers who, you know, wanted to pay multiples with the property like otherwise before or?
No, they didn't. Because it wasn't, so what was interesting is at that point, you know, there were no broad, broad-based plans for redevelopment in the area. So, you know, they, initially there was some, some holdback because there was some thought that the FBI building may be relocated to that area. But once that became clear that was not going to happen, they, they weren't able to get the giant multiples they were looking for. But when I say severely run down, I mean, we're talking about, you know, old abandoned 7-Eleven buildings, liquor stores, I mean, true blight in an area where, you know, if you walk across the street, you've got a major federal agency building there with 5,000 employees. So it was, it was a core project of Richard Baker and was one that, you know, I think Prince George's was incredibly happy with the success. Because the county wasn't able to acquire the land, they had to use one of their authorities to do so. So that's why we used the combination, the revenue authority as well as the redevelopment authority to effectuate both the transaction as well as the redevelopment efforts.
Is that by right or is it by order? Do we have, we have to have an order? I don't understand how we would just take it.
Take, I'm sorry, take property? Well, I'm not sure, I mean, I don't know if there's property being considered in this instance. That was, that was respected to do what the county wanted to do with their area-wide TIF. You know, you obviously can either purchase it or, you know, through eminent domain declare it, but that's obviously a right of the town.
So the, I'm glad we're talking a little bit about this. So if this was set up, could the, the bond dollars be used for a specific project using it to acquire land? Is that what you said? We could acquire land for economic development?
Potentially, yeah. I would probably urge you to acquire your town attorney. I'm not sure what the enablement statutes are with respect to what the limitations are with what the town can do in terms of acquiring land. I mean, it happened to be specific to Prince George's County. The county was not able to buy the land, they had to use a separate property, but using the bond proceeds to do so is permissible. So, you know, just, just moving on, you know, certain themes of success, you know, it is, it's not a silver bullet. You know, there's, there's usually other components that are involved in a tax increment financing, especially on a project-based level. And, you know, it can be a valuable source of financing when done right and structured right with the right team. You know, I've seen, you know, where I've seen issues arise is when, you know, you don't have the right set of professionals involved in the transaction. You know, looking back during the Great Recession in Florida, most of the defaults of these forms of bonds occurred in Florida due to lax underwriting standards, no real appraisal criteria, no third-party study requirements. I could say in the state of Maryland, there's never been a TIF default, which not many states can say. And a lot of that has to do with some of the professionals that town's already working with, such as Beauty Gap and some of the lawyers such as Ms. Minn and true professionals who know how to do this, structure it and create a, create a structure such that the town itself is in a good position to ensure success for both the investors and its project. You know, when thinking of a TIF, there's two general structures. You can either issue bonds upfront to finance the infrastructure or you can do a PEGO. I think that's relatively straightforward. Generally where, where you want to issue bonds upfront is if you do have significant improvements or infrastructure needs that need to get financed before the rest of, of the project or other components of the project can move forward. PEGO tends to work whereby you already have a completed project and you're providing a subsidy to a developer to continue delivering. You know, for example, at Arundel Mills, the developer there, you know, has a, more or less a PEGO with Arundel County where he gets an annual, an annual subsidy and did pick, elected not to do bonds upfront, he just financed it himself. He receives a 20-year subsidy from Arundel County through, I believe, 2045. And now was with respect to building a convention center adjacent to the Live Casino and then gave the county permission to hold all of its graduating ceremonies for all of its schools as well as some of its professional, professional academies going forward as the county didn't have a facility large enough to host graduation ceremonies.
Very interesting.
Some of the mechanics, I would probably urge everyone to turn to page 11 in their book and I think this is a nice illustration of how the TIF works because sometimes it can be a little confusing. But if you look down at the chart that I've provided, when you create a TIF, the first thing that you do and it's done via ordinance is you create a development district and you certify, you certify and freeze the base value of all of the taxable properties in that district. That essentially is locking your base value, that's going to be the basis going forward. If you look at the green bars and the purple bars, that, that is what, you know, future revenues, you know, are being projected to, to be realized. Here's a function on the TIF. So you've got your red line, that, that throws a tax base, that continues to come back to the town. Everything over and above, the green in this instance, that's the portion of revenues that would be dedicated to hypothetical financing. And then everything over and above the, the debt service on the bonds illustrated in the purple would flow back to the general fund. And then upon the expiry of, or termination of the bonds, then all of those values and infrastructure, you know, be, flow back to the town.
To declare a TIF district, does that obligate the municipality to do anything?
No, the municipality can create a development district at any time. There's no obligation or requirement to issue bonds. But if it creates a development district early before it anticipates, you know, significant future development or growth, it essentially just reserves, you're reserving your firepower. The earlier you freeze your base value, obviously the lower your basis is. So if you, you know, are contemplating or expecting a sizable amount of new development, that's all going to be realized as increment that could be available for debt service. But under, under no certain, under no requirement is the town obligated to move forward with financing. You're just essentially, you know, reserving your firepower for if and when you have identified, you know, core projects that the town wants to pursue, you'll have the ability to do so with more firepower.
So to do that, if, you know, I think we all had the state of Maryland planning department, we were all reviewing the TIF.
Yep.
Class. And the one thing that they stressed on was clear and concise borders for that TIF.
That's correct.
District.
Yes. You need to have, you need to have exacting and precise borders. All of that needs to be, you know, very clearly delineated, defined, both in narrative and visual format, if and when, you know, there's a pursuit to, you can barge on that.
Can a, if, if we were to choose the town as a whole, what's currently the town of Elton as our TIF district and it was clear and concise, when we have future annexations, would we have to declare an additional TIF district or does it, will it grow with, as a town grows?
That's a good question. I think you would have to, you would probably have to exempt those properties if you were to annex them, quite frankly. And once you define the, I mean, if, if you're annexing properties into the defined boundaries of the TIF, that's a different story. Or for example, let's say you were to sell a municipal building which wouldn't be recognized as, as increment. I'm speaking hypothetically, not suggesting anyone do so. But if you were to take a, a piece of property that's exempt for taxation and then sell it to a for-profit individual, that property would then, could be picked up on the tax rolls within the TIF. But anything outside of the district would not, would, could not be considered in the TIF district.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
If the entire town were designated as a TIF area, but a very specific area were identified for like urban renewal, would that be, could that be done? So the entire town is a TIF area, but could a very small amount be designated as an urban renewal project in order to use those TIF funds? Would that be a renewal?
Sure, sure, absolutely. Look, I, yeah, I just wanted, you have the ability to do whatever you want with your, with your tax increment, you know, any dollars that, you know, are generator flow for you create a financing, you, you can use them how you deem fit. You don't have to do bonds. You know, you could push them all back to the general fund. You have a wide, you know, wide berth and latitude to do so. You know, once you issue bonds, you then have an obligation at that point to sweep the revenues that are equal to the annual debt service amount to a trustee. Everything over and above goes, goes back to the town or can be used by the town for, you know, whatever uses it deems, it deems, you know, needed.
Hypothetically, if we were not to incorporate the entire town under the TIF and we chose certain districts, say we designate a district, can it be undesignated or is there a time limit that we have to act on it after we designate it?
You can, you can designate or undesignate it as you see fit. Your only obligation is if and when you decide to do bonds. You will need to leave that, that district in place until the bonds have been payable. But just creating a district itself, you know, you could, you could let that, you could terminate it at your discretion so long as you've not obligated the town under, to a financing. You know, I have a number of other, you know, kind of credit factors I can, I can touch on or I can just, you know, briefly talk about some of the other projects that have been done throughout the state, which, you know, will just give, you know, give folks some understanding of where and how it's been used.
Uh huh.
So if you, you know, turn to the last page, page 29, you know, this is just a snapshot of some of the TIF projects that have occurred over, you know, the last 20 years throughout Maryland. They are broadened scope and, you know, have all addressed various different types of needs and requirements of, of a locality. I had mentioned the Prince George's County Sutland Naylor project, you know, that was really to address broad-based blight. National Harbor, I'm sure folks have probably been to or driven by on their way into the district or into Virginia. That was a subsidy that was designed to help the project go forward. And, you know, right now, National Harbor has an evaluation, I believe, of about $3 billion. Their TIF is kicking off, you know, orders of magnitude of, I think in excess of $5 to $7 million a year. It has been, you know, a smashing success from, you know, economic development standpoint. You know, moving down into the city of Baltimore, for those who are familiar with East Baltimore Development, that was an initiative undertaken at both the state, city, federal and county level. That was to help address some of the severe blight in and around Johns Hopkins University. That ended up being a multi-billion dollar project that is still underway to this day. But that was a TIF issued by the city. There are actually multiple TIF bonds issued by the city, some of which were taken privately by certain nonprofits to kind of assist the, the city with the financing. But, you know, they've helped create an area in and around Johns Hopkins, including new school, new streets, new parks, in an area where, you know, quite frankly, and this is not a joke, where they were filming The Wire 15 years ago. And I can tell you, I actually had an investor ask me if this is where they filmed The Wire and I agreed that it actually was. But, you know, they have created now kind of an oasis in, in an area of Baltimore that, you know, has historically and continues to struggle, but, you know, this oasis has been a success. The city's continuing to focus additional efforts on, on trying to expand that beyond kind of the immediate project area. But, you know, so far, they've, they've been able to get some success there. You know, I mentioned Port Covington, moving down to Arundel County, Village of Watch Apple, these were projects designed to help assist Grebert Givens, which is a regional developer with the creation of a new shopping center and stores. That has been a smashing success. County actually refinanced those bonds. They're AAA rated accounting similar to Cecil and they refinanced those bonds using a full faith in credit. That's how strong the project has become. Moving down into Howard County, the first two TIFs they've done there. The first was to finance a new parking station at the Mark Station, this is Annapolis Junction, as part of a broader overall development plan that includes multifamily mixed-use residences and an adjacent to the Mark Station. And then even in the city of Annapolis, the city and the county together partnered to create a TIF to finance a parking garage for a hotel as well as, you know, other, other retail businesses on West Street. And that has been like similar to Watch Apple, that's been a success. The county and the city collectively used their balance sheet to refinance those bonds, giving how strong the project, you know, currently is, currently stands. That, I'm happy to take any questions or I can go back into some of the more detailed metrics. I thought maybe that might be a little too detailed for this time here, but I'm happy to speak.
I have a, I have a couple of questions, just so, so that I'm completely understand it and I believe I've got a pretty good handle on it. So the town of Elton currently were about a $1.1 billion assessable base for a town. And if we were to create a town-wide district, it would freeze that number only on paper, that it was one point. It would create our assessable base at 1.1 would be on paper. It would create our assessable base at 1.1 would be on paper. So as develops, as, as the development of the Trammell-Crowe project, which is a $300 million project, as well as the remainder of Southfields, which will be about another $400 million, and the projects of the Ayers property, the project of the single-family houses and the Thompson Estates, the, the additional houses that are being built off of Bunny Lane, all that additional gives us the firepower if we lock it in at a lower number, because now this number could be up to as much as, in five years, it could be as much as $2 million, or $2 billion.
That's, that's absolutely correct. And that, that's why, you know, I, you know, when looking at, you know, potentially doing it, that's why it would make sense to do that now before that value gets realized on the assessed, under ESTAP, on the assess rolls. Because if you lose that firepower that, or if, or those properties or those developments get assessed, and they're currently recorded on the tax rolls, you know, that firepower that the town has of future development is, is lost, absent, you know, another form of financing.
Would we, why would we want to include the entire town where we have established assessments that are successful? Wouldn't that affect you more?
I, I think, I guess the reason why I thought the overall for the town would be, it would make it more clear and concise, using the town language. But it would also, we would gain those incremental dollars of firepower, I'll use that word, of the SD's expansion. The different parts of the town, we would be gaining all that assessable dollar value. So over by Cracker Barrel, we've got a pretty good sized project going on. It went from currently, right now, on the tax rolls, it's probably a $200,000 parcel. But once it's done, it's going to go up to probably a $5 or $6 million.
Right. I get that part. I'm talking about stuff that's already here. It's not going to affect our...
No, it doesn't affect.
Oh, okay.
No, I don't think it affects anything.
Has no bearing at all. You know, you're, you're just...
On what number we go in at?
Right. You do, the idea is you want, you want your number to be as low as possible before the new development gets recorded. Because if it gets recorded before you create the district, then you lose that benefit of, of, from a TIF perspective. You still get the benefit, the town still gets the benefit of those dollars regardless. But if you were trying to do a TIF financing down the road, you would lose that firepower to, to support the revenue stream.
So it doesn't matter if your number is already at 1.1 billion, it's about the possibility of the firepower that you're going to have?
Yeah, the key is just trying to get, trying to get it in before the future, the future development gets recorded.
And I think we've got some room belts grew throughout the whole town.
I got, I got that part, using that as a number.
What is, so, just to clarify this again, so if there's a district named, and we don't pursue any bonds ever, no damage other than the cost to probably define...
Probably, you know, you're probably at a, a, a small amount of, it's a small labor cost in terms of, you know, working with, with your outside counsel to create an ordinance, but that would be it.
But if we did it, this would give us a funding tool, if needed, to be able to do stormwater management projects, flood control projects, new roads, new bridges.
That's correct. And just to give you an example, Baltimore County actually gave, created a development district for Sparrows Point, you know, which is where the TradePoint team has come in. And, you know, that now is, I mean, it's a multi-billion dollar investment. You know, that, that district terminated, the county elected not to do a TIF financing, and they instead just gave a, a large grant to the developer instead, because they saw what was happening with respect to the growth on the site, and they decided they'd rather just give them upfront dollars now and have the full benefit of, of the value of that property down the road. So there's an example where you had a development district, created, it ended up being terminated, and no bonds were issued, no one was out, you know, any worse to wear, other than, you know, the time it takes to create a bond ordinance.
So one of the, you, you'd mentioned the Great Recession. We know that a lot of the assessable base went down in 2007, 2008, 2009, certainly here. And I think we felt that through probably 14,000, 14, 2015, a couple assessment cycles. If there was bonds, TIF bonds being sold, there's a risk that that could happen again. But tell me the, how come Maryland, what does Maryland do differently to make sure that these, these bonds don't fail?
Well, you know, so where, where pure TIF bonds ran into issues was they, they created a bond inside the revenue stream equal to, you know, the debt service on the bonds. So there's really no margin if, if you had an up or down, if you had a real down here. What, you know, Maryland, what they've done is they've, they've sized it so you have some, you have some capacity if there is a decline. So you would size to, you know, maybe 125 or 150% of, of debt service. So you pledge the revenue stream, you only, you know, only the amount that goes to debt service gets paid to the investor, but you give yourself some, some runway if, you know, to, to take that into account. It's when they're sized so tightly to the revenue stream that, you know, any deviation away from, you know, a 1 or 2% up or downward swing is where you, you know, historically, you know, projects ran into issues during the Great Recession. So the idea is you, you, you size and structure the bond with, with enough margin of error that, you know, it can account for and accommodate, you know, a decline.
You've had an oper, I, I think you've looked at, you've worked with UNICAP, probably on...
Every project, for the most part, I've ever done.
And, and did you work on the special, special taxing district?
Yes, so I, I have, actually, the town, I'm working with the town, UNICAP and the rest of the professionals on the special taxing district financing, that is scheduled, you know, to happen sometime, I believe, next year.
The, I guess where, so you've looked at the potential revenue, I'm going to, I think you've looked at the potential revenue of maybe the Southfields project, for example?
Yeah, the Southfields, I have, I have not looked at the revenue, I haven't seen revenue projections for what Trammell-Crowe is projected to do, because it's not inside the special taxing district. But I can make an assumption that those revenue assumptions are going to be quite large.
And I, I guess that's where I was getting at, because we, we've had the, in fact, we got a couple of them back here now, but we've got a couple of the developers that have came in with the project, and we've heard all kinds of crazy numbers. I mean, is, could you share with us a number that you think it could be, or is that just putting you out on the map?
I, I think that, well, let me, I don't have the numbers in front of me. But I can certainly, you know, we can put together some, I think, back-of-the-envelope numbers that are relatively informed, and we can share them with, with this team here, with this group here, after the fact. It's, suffice to say, I think there will be a, a sizable amount of new revenues coming into the town as a, as a, as a function of all of this new development that's underway and plans to occur in, in the next five years.
Very good. Anyone have any questions up here?
My only question was going to be about the special taxing district. I was concerned if that had an effect on it in any way, you know, if it would make that area different.
It would not. What would happen is, is, you know, the, the special taxing district, the ta, the people in the special taxing district, they're paying supplemental tax for the infrastructure and the improvements and the property that they're benefiting from. So there, that, it won't affect them whatsoever. The TIF, however, will capture the value of all of the, the growth of that future development and, and, you know, if it designates itself as a, creates a tax increment district.
Is there anything I'm missing, why we wouldn't try to designate an area for our future, future capital improvement projects and planning with this? I mean...
Can I ask a question?
Yes, yeah.
So the list of TIF financings on page 29, are there any, to your knowledge, are you familiar with any municipalities that are more unique like we are, that are closer to our physical size, population size, that have had a successful TIF?
Oh, I can, I can pull, I can pull it together, a list for you.
That might be helpful.
It would, it would be outside of Maryland. The, the most comparable that I can think of was a special taxing district that was done in the city of Hyattsville. But I can find some other reference examples. It's funny, I actually had a conversation yesterday with Chester County, Pennsylvania, where the city of Coatsville, which is very comparable, they're looking to do actually the same thing. And what they want to use their TIF for is for stormwater control, as they've been battling severe flooding, not to the extent that Elkhorn City has. But, you know, Elkhorn City is, is now embarking on a $110 million program to remediate all of the flooding issues through downtown. But the city of Coatsville doesn't have the strength that Howard County does. So they're looking at exploring to do, of doing something like this. The challenge being is, is, you know, in Pennsylvania, you can't finance, they were initially looking to do a special taxing district, but you can't finance improvements outside of the boundaries. You can, however, through a TIF. So that's why they're looking at, at potentially tapping on this form of finance to, you know, trying to remediate the severe flooding that they've experienced.
So, Chris, I see this as a good opportunity for us to maybe be involved with the TIF district, because of Delaware Avenue, that would be a great...
Sure.
Plus for us, because we're dumping money into trying to beautify and fix the area up, and here's a good opportunity to maybe piggyback off of creating a whole district in a, in a beautified way and including that as our...
Well, I think you're, you're in a unique situation in that you have a tremendous amount of known development that's about to occur, that is going to create a sizable amount of revenues that can help you or assist the town, you know, addressing some of its needs. For example, the city of Annapolis, you know, they're experiencing severe flooding. They don't have the ability to tap into tax improvement financing, because the city's entirely developed. You know, there's no, there's no material new growth that's occurring. So they had to explore a different way of doing it, and I think they would have liked to have done it, but they just don't have any, any known new growth that's planned. You know, it's just going to be one-off, you know, home improvements or, you know, improvements to some of the buildings, but nothing sizable that'll allow them to, you know, address, you know, $50 to $100 million of flood control issues that...
I heard you mention about bridges, and that's one of the key things we've talked about, Delaware Avenue, getting a bridge, getting this, getting that, as far as, I keep saying Delaware Avenue, I know that's an headache for everybody, not just the town resident, but the people coming in town. So that would be a big plus for the town itself.
So what's the process? What's the timeframe of creating, starting the process?
I think, you know, I, I would suggest that you probably reach out to Kim Minner, who's been working with the town on the Southfield Special Taxing District. She's a very high, you know, she's an outstanding lawyer, very well-versed in mechanics of tax improvement financing. And start talking, probably bring her in to start thinking about creating an ordinance, and probably work to identify the boundaries that, you know, that the, the town would like to tip. I mean, if it's the whole town, it's the whole town. But, you know, if there's, you know, additional discussion and maybe that's changed, obviously you want to narrow and identify what the boundaries are. But, you know, your first pass is you're going to want to, you know, work towards getting a, a authorizing ordinance, getting that introduced and passed. And then, I believe there's, it takes two readings, I'm pretty sure it's two readings, and then after 45 days, it's enacted. And then after that, then you can work with, you know, your engineers and your, your various departments to figure out, you know, if and what you want to do, or start thinking about the projects down the road. But, you know, first plus, you're just going to want to create a district, and that's working to get a, an authorizing ordinance in place.
I think, you know, sometimes we, we, we're very fortunate, the, the town of Elton's been very fortunate. We've been able to look at projects and, and be able to make it happen. But when you look at future capital improvement, you know, I, Jean Minner gave me a list of, I think there's 17 capital improvement projects that she kind of handed to me, and a lot of them, you know, we, we kind of forget, we forget about today. You know, I, I know that one in particular is a train station. You know, we talked about having a train station here on this board for years, and we looked at the value of that thing being, I don't know, $10, $15, $20 million. It just isn't going to happen. Where are we going to get the money? Well, these are tools that will help us, put us in a position to be able to do that. This will put us in a position to maybe acquire that, finally taper the pedestrian bridge on Delaware Avenue. There are wins, you know, there's, there are wins. And if you have that tool in place, hopefully whoever's sitting up here at any point could use that tool, and we've done a good thing by at least setting the number at a point to where they have some firepower. I think, I think we, I'm absolutely sold on, on moving forward. Luke, can you, you got any downside or any upside or any other?
I, I would prefer to counsel. I wouldn't make, I wouldn't make any recommendation to the board, and you had recommended Kimberly Minner.
I'm sorry?
You recommended Kimberly Minner.
Yeah, only because, you know, one, she's, she's...
Because she's our counsel.
She's your current counsel, she obviously knows the town.
I would have the board meet with counsel.
Perfect. I'd say that to her next step.
Is she the only option?
Uh, she's with UNICAP?
No, no, she's with Wyfer Taylor.
Yeah, Wyfer's our president.
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to provide some, some other names. There's, you know, there's really only about four or five people who do this and do this extremely well in the state, and really in the metro, you know, in the Mid-Atlantic. I'm happy to share some additional names. I only suggested that because she's already been, she's already worked with the town.
I think she works with those.
She's got else before.
Yeah.
I have one additional question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Earlier, when the mayor asked you, what if the bottom falls out of the Mark Building that it did back in, what, 2008, was it?
2008 to '10, yeah.
Yeah. And you said that the TIF could be structured in such a way that there would be a margin for error. I would like to better understand, I think it would be us all to better understand how this TIF could be structured to avoid that margin of error, or to account for it.
Absolutely. So, so there's a number of ways. The first and easiest, which is almost always required, is a debt service reserve fund, which, you know, will give you at least one year of cushion in the event that there's insufficient revenues to pay the bonds. The second is you can pledge a revenue stream over and above the amount equal for debt service. So what I mean by that is, is you would, you know, essentially appropriate, let's say it's $2 million for $1.5 million of debt service. You only pay $1.5 million of debt service. But if, if and when you size only to 100%, if there's, you know, you don't have the ability to go over and above, so if you size slightly larger, if there is a downturn, you have the ability to bring more in under what's been pledged under the legal documents. The third is you can, you can create what's called a supplemental debt service reserve fund. So let's hypothetically say that, you know, the, the projected revenues are plus 10%. You could, you know, sweep up 2% of that extra 10% and put it in a, in a separate, you know, a third reserve fund that could be there as a margin of error for, you know, for, for the investors in the event there is a decline. I think, you know, the idea is, you know, you don't want to over-stress yourself in terms of issuing too much debt. You want to do so, obviously, for what you believe are known, you know, are true good projects, and you want to make sure you do so in a manner where you're, you're not tapping all of that increment, you're tapping a portion of it, so that you have the benefit of, you know, both those funds going back to the general fund, but if you need them, you can use them in the event there is a decline. Those are really the, the primary ways to do so. I mean, I think, you know, where a lot of those projects ran into issues is they were, you know, small, you know, they were, a lot of them were residential projects where the home values tanked. You know, this is, we're, we're looking at a variety of, of development, including a, you know, sizable industrial, $300 million industrial development that, you know, I think is going to be a little more immune to the recessionist, probably single-family housing ones.
All right. Yeah, we discussed that. Well, very good, thank you. Chris, thank you so much. I mean, this was extremely helpful for us. I, I mean, I'm, I'm pretty clear on it.
Wonderful. Well, I... Wonderful, well, I appreciate everyone's time, I thank you for the opportunity, I thank you, and thank you everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we have the chief is up next. Come talk to us about this memorandum of understanding.
Good afternoon. I think this is.
Yes, ma'am.
This is probably just a formality, but before Chief Donnelly resigned, he had signed an MOU with the state's attorney's office regarding seized funds. And what that did is that gave the state's attorney's office twenty-five percent of all forfeited seized funds. And, which is not uncommon. I think it's probably one of the lower numbers, and they do a lot of the work on the back end to make sure that we get this money. So I, there's a couple of requirements, and that's one, that when we get the money, that the finance department creates an initial account for any seized money. And then once that money is turned over in court, then, then there is another fund or another balance line item that goes into a seized, forfeited seized fund. And then we have to give the state's attorney's office twenty-five percent of that. And I just wanted to make it official. It's kind of come up a couple of times, I don't know that we even had a copy of this in our possession until probably six, seven months ago. So before I signed it, I just kind of wanted to bring it to your attention, I was going to sign this to make sure there were no issues. I believe there might have been an email thread, probably last February or March, to you, mayor, in which you said that you were okay if I signed it instead of you. So I just wanted to, to kind of shore this up and make sure this was okay when you signed it.
I, I think this came up over the years, I think the first thing was that house that was.
Probably.
That was a.
Butler's?
Yeah, we took over a house and they worked with us, and then we gave them back twenty-five percent. And then I think they had requested, just making this an ongoing twenty-five percent. And I think in your, the person, the former chief, Matt Donnelly, I think was really working on this also. Prior to, and I think, I don't know why it wasn't executed, I think we were all, felt pretty comfortable with it. I think the challenge was whether we were doing it.
Yeah, and I don't know that we all know about it in the town.
Okay.
As far as, the rest of the police department wasn't aware that one had been signed. And I'm not sure that finance wasn't there either. So we just kind of were bringing all out of the table, make sure that you budgeted pay with that and that this is how we're proceeding.
The, the one question I have, would the state's attorney's office actually receive the check? Do they have their own account? Or should it go into their general fund, the county's general fund?
Well, I believe, in talking to Mr. Donmire, I believe that he actually has a line item in his budget where it is. So he's accounted, it's accounted for, and in case there's an audit, he can track of revenue expenditures. And that's all that I've asked for, Kim, and I believe that that's.
John, you read this thing.
Yeah, it's been some time, I, I worked with Chief Donnelly on that as well as with James Donmire. And I, I think there's, there's probably one, one thing we need to be on top of, which is an area of concern that I had, which I'm okay with now, but the, right around that same time, there was a Supreme Court case that came out, forfeitures and, you know, to make a ridiculous example, it, you know, stole some minor thing and they've got a forfeiture of some huge piece of property that where the people stopped commensurate with, with what was going on. And that was an issue that came up here, it was about a hundred fifty thousand dollars, if I remember correctly, for that, for that house on Butler's. So we, I think we need to be sensitive to that issue and that we, we don't let this state's attorney's office overstep the bounds and bring us into that kind of problem. But as long as we're sensitive to that, the agreement itself, I don't know. But there are some limitations, just based on context, it doesn't pass the smell test.
You guys, I don't have any. I'm good. We're all good. Would need to make a motion authorizing Chief Fallon, I mean, Chief Rogers to sign on behalf of the town of Elton. Do we have a motion to allow Chief Rogers to sign the memorandum of understanding with the Cecil County offices of state's attorney?
Sure.
She moved?
Second.
A discussion. Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Which she carries. Now part of the minutes of this meeting.
Carol, do we have to do that every year?
I don't think so, I think it's just.
Just ongoing?
Absolutely.
Very good, okay, I wanted to make the board aware, I think everyone should have saw the email that the, oh, go ahead, Lou, you're on first. You're probably was going to say a couple of these things I was going to bring up.
I'm sorry?
Your, your report, you're ready.
Yeah, I was going to bring, DHD's a thing, but it's over a million dollars. So I'm reviewing some of the complex language in there. Our responsibilities in terms of the proposal. So I'll probably bring it up at next meeting, January fifth, bring out then.
And that was the, the DHD for what project?
The design of the.
Wastewater Three, complaining. Okay, very good. I wanted to mention that there was an email that was sent over from Artesian Water. There's going to be an increase in our interconnect fee, based upon the Chester Water Authority. Increase to them, and it's, it works out to where it's like a twenty-five percent increase in price for the water that we'll be receiving through the interconnect. The town is committed to two hundred and fifty thousand gallons a day through that interconnect. And I think that twenty-five percent related in, I don't have the actual dollars in front of me, but it was a substantial amount of dollars. I think currently we're paying about seventeen thousand a month, so you could pretty much figure another twenty-five percent on top of that, so.
Thirty-four thousand.
Thirty-four thousand?
Steve is.
Steve, are you there?
I am here.
Can you tell us what the dollar amount of the increase will be?
Uh, we are currently paying, uh, let me get this up, bear with me one second. Uh, this, this represents about a that is, we're currently paying about thirty-some thousand dollars, as high as forty-some thousand dollars a month. It, it's, this represents about a point one percent increase over previous rate, but this is, has been accumulated by twenty-five percent increase since they started drawing water from Artesian. That amounts to like an eighty-four cents per thousand gallon increase. This is our first, our first agreement with them. They have not had a pricing increase to us in five years, so this is, I guess they were certainly doing pricing fees by this point. But, yeah, we're, we're paying, it could be like forty thousand dollars a month or so from them.
Steve, can we increase the, the flow through of the, the water to them up on top of Bell Hill Road?
Well, we're.
Is ours based on our rate?
We, we can't, but it's, they're just, they're, as far as I know, they're taking on, they need to serve the actresses there on Bell Hill Road, so uh, we can't just give them more money because they have no way of storing it, they're just going to supply the water that's demanded for those properties on Bell Hill Road.
Need your flow, can't give them any more water.
No, the, the price of that water is what I was asking.
Well, we would just, yeah, we, we charge them, but they charge us plus twenty percent, which is what they're increasing to us, and so we actually charge them more than what we pay them. If you could, if you're saying we're getting all the water from them and directly sending it to Bell Hill Road, but of course they're going through our pipes, so to speak. But, but we, we charge them the twenty percent on top of what they charge us, so when their price goes up, our price of them will go up.
Very good, I, I want the board to take a, a real close look at the financial reports on the water and sewer fund. We were very, over the last, oh my gosh, seven years, we've been, we, we gave a eleven percent decrease in the water fund, and then we kicked in about eleven percent decrease in the sewer fund. And we've had a lot of operational cost increase, we've had payroll increase. All these things add up to where, at some point, we've got to take a real strong look at the increase of, I hate to say it, water and sewer. We are still the, one of the lowest municipalities in the state when it comes to water and sewer, which we're very proud of. But these ongoing additional costs are really driving us to where we're going to have to take a look at, take a look at that. And I want all of us to take a look at it together, we'll have some, we'll have Steve make a presentation to us, maybe in January about the water and sewer numbers. I'm not sure if we can, since we've been showing a loss in revenue, my question is, can we use any of the ARPA funds? The fund that decrease or loss in operations? And I see the head shaking no. It's not COVID related. Okay. All right, I just wanted to get that point out there. I wanted to go, while we're talking about the ARPA funds, I sent the board over a couple links. Yep, yeah, go ahead.
When you say it's not COVID related, I'm going to bring this up because it's on my mind. With the people that could not pay their water bill due to COVID, losing their jobs, not being able to go on their jobs, how come you say it's not COVID related? I mean, it falls, I'm just saying.
I don't know who we pay for not paying based on COVID, I would have no doubt, I would support that. And I think we are paid up. I think, I think we are, I don't think we're in the law.
I'm just asking a question because I'm, I know there's a lot of things that have been affected by not being, people not being able to pay their mortgage. They've gotten mortgage relief and.
I'm just using facts. I think what the, the comment would be is, I think our revenues are still the same. We're not losing on revenues, I think we're losing on expenses, our expenses. Yeah, the spend side has gone up. Our revenues, where, where our residents are still paying us, the dollars are staying the same. So from a, I, I can follow what Steve's saying, that if COVID related, it doesn't seem like there's any struggle for anyone to be making that, or they haven't came to.
If I could interrupt, there was no COVID related reduction in revenue. The revenue that was not able, the bills that were not able to be paid due to those COVID related the creation of not being able to pay, was only deferred, was not eliminated, was not discounted, was not written off. Those payments are always due, they're just deferred without any interest added to it, so we did not lose any revenue. It just was a cash flow that we were behind in for a while, but that is all current right now.
What's our, what's our revenue loss this year?
I think on the water side, I don't have it here in.
Well, we'll send that out, we'll send that out to what we did in analysis, where we lost so many hundreds of thousands a year for three years. And we can send that analysis out.
I think that'd be a big loss to us.
All right, thanks, Steve, I appreciate that.
Okay, while we're on the ARPA funds, I sent an email out to everybody with several examples of how other municipalities are able to help fund public safety and to acquire, I'm going to say, public safety infrastructure. One example that was shown was how one municipality was buying additional police cars to, through the ARPA money. There was several, more than several examples of how municipalities were helping their local fire companies with projects also. And the word that they're using in, in every case was public health response. This is the public health response to future pandemics or to help along with the COVID. Now, I think that we might be getting caught in the woods a little bit, that we always think that there has to be a loss in revenue before we can give things away. But it seems like around the state, they're using the word public health response. Jean shared with me an example of how Bel Air, right now, is redoing their police department, or going to redo their police department, to create more spacing between the individuals so it would create that
safer environment.
So I think we can use this, these dollars without having to put together a, a profit loss statement for these, the, for, for entities, as long as we know that it's for a public health response. Do you guys agree with that, or am I off target here? I don't. I, I think that that, I think, but I, I know that staff is reviewing these, and, and I also know that they're looking at the guidelines that they're handed with it also. But I, I guess what I'm asking staff to do is, I think the bottom line is, we want to make a contribution to, I'll use this one, for the Singly Fire Company. And we want to make, whether it's acquiring a new piece of equipment for them, or whatever it may be, we just want to make this thing happen. Do you guys agree with that? Are you guys on board? I think.
I've been on the board.
I think we're all on board here, so we just got to figure out how in the language we can make that happen. Thank you. So I know that we're going to figure out how to make that happen. I know that we'll have that answer.
Yeah, well, we're learning as we go.
We are learning, and it's been, it has been very difficult, and, and I've read it, and I've talked to, the challenge that I have is I talk to the other mayors across the state, and they feed me back some information, and then I, quite frankly, it was, it was good to know that they bought police cars. And, and I know that we're getting ready to acquire to keep that fleet thing going the right way.
And throughout the whole process, you're right, it's the language that you write that makes a difference, and also justify what you're doing for your municipality.
And, and I, I one hundred percent agree with staff to be very, very cautious on this because Charlie, you'll be the one having to go to jail for it.
I'll go for it.
I'll go for you.
Because I'm not going, I'm going to be safe. I'm not going, I'm going to be safe on that.
We swear, I'll do it.
All right. No, I, I, I think that we want to do everything absolutely by the book and correct. I just can't understand why these other entities are announcing that this is how they're doing it, and we can't figure out a way to do it. So I'm asking, just please figure out a way that we can do it. Thank you, guys. All right, that's all I have, Jean?
When is our schedule in January? Is it the fifth?
It's the first and third Wednesday.
Back to normal with the workshop?
Back to normal with the workshop, but everything's still at noon.
Back to normal?
First three Wednesdays.
The first three Wednesdays, and everything's at noon.
On the first three Wednesdays?
Yes.
Okay.
And the holiday decorating contest is due from us to you by what day? Monday the twentieth, please, and nine in the morning. And what you're holding is the latest.
Yeah, I see it.
We had a national.
It's, it's amazing, we have, we have six thousand homes in the town of Elton, and we've got seven that have applied to the house decorating.
And you know, there's a lot of houses around town, as you're riding, that you see are just gorgeous, but it's like, you almost wish they had put in for it.
Yes.
That's why I was wondering why we.
Maybe we do rate-ins.
Register.
We do a rate-in this year.
Okay. No, I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I can't believe it's a couple of weeks and we're not going to see each other in between.
You can invite us over.
Okay.
If you were ever home.
Huh? Yeah, if you were ever home, Rob, I don't know what I would do. Now Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you, Jean. Charles?
Uh, I guess the same as Jean, Merry Christmas to everyone, but I would put you on alert that on January the eighteenth, we will.
that on January 18th, we will continue the 32nd Martin Luther King program, which I couldn't have ordered any of all those years. And this year would be at Five Rivers. And it will be the same time, eight to nine, instead of the full breakfast that we once were graciously able to give people. It would be more of a continental breakfast. Program will start at nine, and we should be out of there by 10:00. And of course, we are at Five Rivers. They go to the protocol of safe and vulnerable, with your mask or whatever. So you all will be getting them. I just thought, I thought they got them to be early, so you could know.
What was that date, Charles?
18th.
And let me ask you, I see 17th is the Monday.
That's the Monday. That's what it's supposed to be. Isn't that the 18th?
No, 17th.
Whatever that Monday is.
All right, 17th.
Whatever.
The 17th. So it's the 17th.
Yes, sir. I'm done.
Oh.
17th. They'll do that Monday.
Oh, okay.
Earl?
Yeah, I'm so glad that Gene and Charlotte Givens didn't get a chance to say this first. I want to thank the, the town for their involvement into the Christmas party that we had. Kathleen, number one, I want to thank her. Michelle, the Barca Rec Staff, and DPW, they done a great job for putting together a good little Christmas party for the town of Elton. And after saying that, we should buy them a Christmas.
Yes, we do. Yeah, Charlie and I agreed that we do that.
Give me something to say.
Rob, you're on?
Yeah, that was a very nice party. And Merry Christmas to everybody except you, Earl. Listen, I'm going to go to the quarterly MML dinner in Bel Air next week, is it?
Yes, it's on Thursday.
And while I'm there, I'm going to ask if we might get a presenter from the MML to talk to us about exactly how we can use these funds. Does that sound like a good idea to the board?
Yeah, I, I'd be great, but I would say that we'll probably reach out to them in the meantime. And we're having that on Tuesday, 9:30 to 10:00. They, we've got that seminar on the ARPA funds.
Yeah.
That was recommended by the MML.
So that's on Tuesday. Did I send a link over to everybody on the...? No, I didn't send it to the board. I sent it to you and Steve and Michelle.
Well, Steve can't because he's done interviews, but Michelle and I are.
Perfect. Does anyone on the board want to be on that seminar also? There's a registered link that you can get onto it next on Tuesday.
What time? 9:30 to 10:30. In 20 hours.
Maybe.
Michelle, can you send that to everybody?
Yes, I'd like to be on that.
Yeah, I forgot to tell everybody. I'm on a seminar tomorrow night for the Planning Commission for the state of Maryland. So, yeah, forgot to mention that.
Is there anything else that you guys would like me to bring up at the MML, if everyone on there?
Listen, I think it's good when you're over there, it's in Bel Air this year, or this, uh, next week.
Is that the armory? I thought.
At, at the armory. Take a look at that armory and take a look at some of the things they've done to it, and also ask those other municipalities how they're spending the ARPA money. Doesn't hurt to ask them, say, hey, are you giving any money to nonprofits? What's your, what's your plan? How are you doing it? It doesn't hurt. And we're, I think we're also going to send Kathleen. I, I sent a letter to the Elton Alliance today to have Kathleen be kind of an ex officio on the Elton Alliance.
Good idea.
That way that she can start to learn a little bit about the economic development that's happening in the, in the town. And it's nice that she's going to this event, because we've got a big armory over here. Maybe she can ask some questions on some things that are happening.
I like that a lot.
She did a great job in the planning process of the Neighborhood Community Center. The more and more people we can get through there, I think it's better off for our community, and it's going very, very well. Anything else, sir, to tip for me? I would be remiss if I didn't mention that on December 8, 1963, of course, we had the tragic airplane crash in Cecil County. There's, from the Cecil Wig, and on December 11th.
Actually, it was December 8. That was the week, but it happened December 8.
Yeah.
You know, the crash.
Yeah, this was, today is December 8, correct?
Yeah, today's the anniversary.
It happened today. Today's the anniversary. The newspaper came out on the 11th, and they had a little front page action on the, on the, in the wig itself. But it was a, a tragic thing, and I know that the former mayor, Joe Faison, had, had a passion for this, and he was steerheaded, putting a monument out at Terrence. So there's an actual monument there that recognizes the crash. I was looking through, and it's one of these kind of sidebars, but I was, the most people that were struck dead by a lightning strike was that plane. That was in the Guinness, it's in the Guinness Book of World Records. It lists us on that plane. Not crazy, yeah.
Wow, that's a trip.
Yeah, it's 100, I don't know how many, what was the actual number?
81.
81 people at one time were struck. They considered that.
I remember seeing the, the light in the sky. It was so bright.
You guys are being a lot older than me. I was only, I was two years old at the time.
No, I was low.
Okay, this is... Yes, Charles?
Talking with Jared Kraus on, two days ago, and he said that his father, Jimmy, which was the mayor and a town official here, is now in Calvert-Nerse, I think it was in Pennsylvania previously. And he is welcoming visitors. Their hours are limited, and I think one of the problems he has is mobility and walking. So at least you are aware of one of our former colleagues.
That's great to know. I didn't know where he was in, in Pennsylvania. And Jim had called me a couple of different times, and I hope he's feeling better. This is the time that we open up the floor for anyone that has anything to say for the good of the town of Elton. And we've got, anyone have anything to say out in the audience? Hearing none? Do we have anyone on our Zoom meeting that has any interest to say anything for the good of the town of Elton? If you do, unmute yourself and speak up to me. Hearing none? This meeting is adjourned.